One minute if, if, if we need one minute. Good afternoon. Welcome to the policy workshop dated June 5th, 2018, 4 o'clock. Today we'll be going over Chapter 8. And as we did before, I know we're privileged to have Mr. Lumpy here today to lead, also support the discussion. So we're doing Chapter 8, and I think as we did before, we'll just have Mr. Hardy go through and kind of highlight whatever, and then if there are any board members that had certain areas that they wanted to change or discuss, then we go from there. Pretty informal. Good?
Okay.
Good to go? Everyone okay with that?
All right, thank you. Chapter 8 is entitled Auxiliary Services and is really a bit of a mishmash of a lot of classified type issues, safety, food service, transportation, and the like. And Mr. Lumpy and Mrs. Zucker were responsible for these chapters, and I know that they have gone through. And I know that we have presented you all with our suggested changes. I know that in addition to the suggested changes that are listed here, Mrs. Zucker has further gone through and done some typo kind of corrections, which I appreciate her spending the time on. And we won't go through each of those kinds of changes as we talk today, but know that those changes will be made and shown in red before this comes back to you to advertise. But those, I understand, are all non-substantive changes, capitalization, those kinds of things.
Save, save one thing, and you'll see this as you go through. You'll see references to the Director of Safety and Security in policy that is now the Executive Director of Public Safety. You'll see references to the department head, and that actually occurred after
Right.
we had done this review. So you will see some things relative to the safety and security organizational structure that Ms. Zucker has highlighted as well. And like Mr. Hardy said, we'll make sure that we include those in red in your final when we advertise.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So like we did last time, I'll just go through and, you know, try to move reasonably quickly unless someone says stop, that they want to talk about something. I know you've all had this to look at. The first set of policies in Chapter 8 largely deal with the safety and security, and Scott and I have gone through them, and Mike Andreas was a big part of that as well. So we'll start with 8.10, entitled Safety. I don't think there are any huge changes suggested here. There's not in most of these. So unless somebody says they want to do it, talk about it further. We'll then move on to 8.11, which is entitled Safety Program. Again, not a lot of changes suggested there. 8.111 is Key Control and Access to Buildings, and this one has some more changes in it. Mike Andreas, I think, proposed most of all these changes. They talk about keys and what to do about adding proximity cards, which is a new concept since whenever this policy
Mm-hmm.
was last written. Added an alarm policy. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions about that, but those are just highlighting the types of changes.
Mm.
Okay. Moving 8.12, Toxic Substances. Other than a capitalization, no changes there. 8.13 is Infection Control, just adding one more subsection about reporting exposures to the OSHA Coordinator and Risk Management.
Can I just go back one, one thing?
Yep.
The alarm policy. If somebody sets off an alarm, is there anything here that denotes what they're responsible? I'm not dying myself out. I set off, I set off alarm during Christmas holiday. I'm dying myself out. And I didn't know what I was supposed to do.
So one of the things you'll notice is it makes reference to-
I did call Todd, and I did call Mike Andreas, and I did call the principal when that happened.
Always call 966-SAFE. That's always the right thing to do. 966-7233. But you'll notice that in that policy, there's a line that says the superintendent working with the Director of Safety and Security will develop guidelines.
Right.
Honestly, the first time Mr. Hardy and I looked at this policy, Mike had included some of those guidelines, and we kind of drew a line and said, you know, what ought to be policy versus what ought to be procedure. And so you'll see some of that stuff in a, in a supporting procedural document.
It'd be nice if there was some note, because the building was fake. I didn't know what to do. And so it was rather embarrassing. And then I was like, okay, do I run away? And then I get a video of me running away. It's like, okay, I better hang out here.
But I will think, I think that's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up, especially as it relates to security. I think there's a depth of procedural element that will be worked upon, and I think going too granular on the policy element may tie our hands in a certain way. And I think that, that, I think that there's been a lot of tweaks, but that'll be drilled down much more.
So there's a mural of Venice High, and in the mural of Venice High, there's, one of my employees is in it, and he's pitching. And he came home for Christmas, and he wanted to see his picture of him in Venice High. So.
So we got that on the record now. Caroline?
The one thing that we have to always be sure we do, and that is a policy is an overview.
Mm-hmm.
And a procedure is the details.
Correct. Right. And I think specifically as it relates to safety and security, the procedural part especially is what that is, what that entails, how we follow it up, how we audit that. And I, I think I had marked one place as far as the auditing component to that. I don't know if we had written in there. I'll pull that up. But the proceed, the more granular systematic aspect, I don't, I don't know. I think that's more procedure. Yeah. No worries. No, appreciate you calling yourself up.
Well, 966-SAFE is the answer, too.
Yes.
I just know that there was a video of me running away from an alarm.
Well, now we all know about that.
We can put it right beside the video of Mrs. Zucker climbing under the fence.
[laughing] You're bad.
All right. So we are now, I believe, at 8.14.
Yes.
Inspections. And no, no big changes there, other than specifying where the inspection report is, are submitted. 8.15 is a, the Fire Safety Inspection Policy.
And, and most of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, especially Caroline, I know you worked on this, is, a lot of this was, the tweaks were statutory updates and just amended. Okay.
It speaks to statutory, and it also speaks to NFPA 72 if it's-
Right.
Fire, Life Safety 101.
8.16, Emergency Drills. I think that's all nomenclature.
And that's a great topic, just again, going back to the procedural aspect, I think, especially as we talk about security. That's been a key component of the drills and comparing it to what we always talk about as fire drills, and that's required. But any additional drills for active shooters or what have you, is that something we want to include, or is it just a high level? Is that going to be more procedural?
This has emergency drills, so wouldn't it include that?
Yeah. But I don't know if we need to, so.
Articulate in a policy. And I think that's where you draw the line, too. What's, what's our procedural conversation with the building principals as to what we expect from them each year? I think you're right that we have had a focus on fire drills, and that focus, some of that's statutory. There's law that says you have to do X number of those every year. But I think we do need to start turning our attention more towards the other kinds of drills, evacuations, and active shooters, and those kinds of things. But again, I don't know that you say that in policy.
Well, it's, I mean, it's listed here.
Yes.
Not, not exactly what you're doing, but it recognizes in Roman numeral two, "Developing Response Plans for Such Emergencies As Fire, Bomb Threats, Active Shooter, Hostage Situations, Et Cetera." So those are recognized. Exactly what you do is not delineated.
The frequency. Okay. I think it was just the, again, I think the depth of this is all going to come down to procedures, which typically, we don't overview procedures, but I think when it comes to the safety, some, some, many of them will be tweaked. That may be something, well, I don't know, for workshop.
Well, in reality, you wouldn't want somebody to know what your plan is for active shooter or drills like that.
Oh, no. No, I mean, frequency at which we're training our staff. That's, that's kind of where my, my thought was.
Sure. Okay. 8.17 is entitled Emergency Disaster. 8.18 is Emergency Closing of Schools. 8.19 is entitled Security Plan, and that's obviously very brief.
Mm-hmm.
8.20 is, we're now shifting gears, I think, into more facilities-type-related policies. 8.20 is entitled Preventative Maintenance, and not suggesting any changes to the policy itself. 8.21, Sanitation. Similar.
Yeah.
8.23 is entitled Use of Unmanned Aerial Systems. This is the drone policy, and this is actually a fairly new policy. Not, not really any substantive changes there. 8.30 turns toward Transportation, which takes up a fair amount of Chapter 8. And that's just the purpose and function of Transportation. That's just recognizing that it's not just phone, phones anymore, but there's a web-based communication.
The only, I know it says the district may, is, and we currently have a Safe Driver Hotline?
Effectively, no.
So that's why I wanted to know if we wanted to change it to shall and versus, I mean, so that's really where those, those key are, those are key words, and that's where we would get, and I think that that would, I don't know if that would benefit. I think you could provide some good insight on that, just in general, considering, I know, we want, we want that response to be manageable, because, but I also think that there's a benefit to that. Do you have any insight from shall versus may?
It's a policy decision, so we'll certainly follow the direction of the board. The, the places where I hear mostly about Safe Driver concerns, there are two big ones. One is citizens reaching out to you, because your emails are accessible, and so they'll send a, an email to you, the superintendent, and say, here's what I witnessed today. Or on our, on the front page of our website, there's a place where you can ask a question or make a comment, and, and I get them there, too. So citizens are finding ways to let us know about concerns relative to particularly unsafe habits. But right now, there isn't a, a hotline, so to speak.
But there's a web-based communication.
There is indeed.
But the difference is requiring it versus?
Well, I think if the, if the policy says shall, then there would have to be something more on the website than just a general, have any comments?
Right.
There would have to be something that would be more targeted to transporta, you know, transportation concerns. Because that's obviously what a hotline would be, you know, that's the, we've all seen those on the back of trucks, you know?
Yeah.
Comment on my driving call, whatever.
Eric.
Yeah, I, I kind of go with Scott on this, that I have not seen people have, be shy to complain to us, in that I think that if we put a, a number on, on a hotline, I think it's going to cause more problems than it's going to solve.
Be able to manage it properly.
Managing it and following up, and people impulse at when they're calling. And I think, I, at least from my point of view, I haven't seen that the community has a problem with notifying us when they have a problem.
Okay. Very good.
That's-
That's the only note I had on that one. Or any other comments on, okay.
All right. 8.31 is a student, entitled Student Transportation. Just some nomenclature changes there. 8.311 is one we're suggesting be removed, and that was at least in part at my suggestion, because I frankly didn't understand what this was designed to accomplish. I shared it with Lynn Peterson, the risk manager, and I think her reaction was similar to mine. It's not that we're trying to change anything. I just was not sure what this was adding to the, to the policies.
Liability is protected.
Well, and in non-formal bus transportation. So that, that basically means that our policies include, but we're self-insured.
Right. And we have other policies that, and procedures that are designed to fully limit, you know-
Yeah.
do our job well, and, and that then limits liability. So I didn't, I just, this obviously got, it says adopted in 2005. I don't know how or what-
The statute reference is-
They're just the kind of general statute.
So it's not-
Yeah, it's not something that's required for, for this to be stated, so.
Any comments, thoughts? Okay.
All right. 8.32 is Bus Routes.
Hmm.
8.33 is Bus Emergency Evacuation Drills.
Mr. Hardy?
Mm-hmm.
So why did we get rid of the last sentence?
Are we, I'm, I'm sorry.
8.33, right?
The six weeks.
Right.
Because it, as I recall, contradicted some other policies that we had. If you look at 8.33 in one, it says, "Initial Instruction for Bus Drivers," and now we are suggesting changing that to say, "Shall be provided prior to transporting students." That's, that makes good sense.
Yes.
But three hydro, instructing students.
Students, right, says, "During the first six weeks of the first semester." If you flip to the next policy, which is 8.34, which we're not suggesting be changed, it says that initial instruction, and we're now talking about students, "Initial Instruction Shall Be Given Within the First 20 Days of the School Year, and the Second Instruction Shall Be Given Within the First Two Weeks of the Second Semester."
Yeah. Well, my question is, is it, is it overcome with some staff that they have, they have to do it twice instead of once? No? Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm saying no. I don't know, I can't respond to the staff standpoint, but I think you have new students coming in, and so it kind of enhanced there.
Right. I didn't, I didn't hear that from the-
Okay, never mind.
But the reason-
Then I acquiesce.
Three was because it contradicted what was in-
Okay.
8.34. All right. 8.35, Exiting the School Bus. 8.36, Transporting Students in Private Vehicles. And there are no proposed changes there. 8.37 is Seat Belts, and the change there is a, is coming directly out of statute as far as the vehicle weight. 8.38 is entitled Automotive Equipment. No substantive changes there.
This may be a quick, quick chapter.
8.39, Vehicle Maintenance Program. No suggested changes there. And 8.391, which is Vehicle School Bus Idling. All right?
Which is also a relatively new policy.
I was gonna say, I thought we just, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it's coming out of, I don't remember if it was regs or statute that specifically talks about idling, trying to prevent that from happening a lot. 8.40 moves us to Food and Nutrition Services. And again, Scott and I went through these, but we were relying a lot on Dr. Gerard looking at these. So a lot of the changes are hers, to the extent there are changes.
Except all the policies are Gerard's.
And in Chapter 8, the Gerards have a, have a corner on the Chapter 8 policies.
Two subsections.
That's funny.
8.40 is the General FNS Policy. 8.41 is entitled Meal Patterns. No changes there. 8.42 is about free and reduced-price meals. 8.43 is Sales Price of Meals. 8.44 is entitled Summer Nutrition Program, and I believe those changes are coming based on statutory changes.
Eric.
Okay. So there are, because we do provide one within five miles of every elementary school that's over 50. Because I, I mean, I took a tour last summer. It didn't seem like there was one within five miles of every elementary school that over 50% free reduced lunch.
So-
Because that'd be a lot of schools.
Well, right, this summer, we probably have 50 summer feeding sites.
Yeah, but they're not all schools.
No, but it would include every school that has, part of, when we pick summer school sites in particular, we pick them with schools where the population is greater than 50%, so that we can offer all kids in that program a free lunch.
So the Boys and Girls Club, that counts as a site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I, okay.
And we prefer those to schools, actually, if, if, if you know that the summer program, we want to be where the kids are.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to pay for electricity.
And it's one of the key challenges that Beverly's had all along, is finding where the kids go in the summer. The Boys and Girls Clubs are the easy ones. The, the less easy ones are like, there's, there was one last year at the, at the library in Arcadia, and there's, we go into some of the, some of the government housing areas where there are kids. Just to finding the kids is the tough part.
As a parent, sometimes it's hard just to find out what to do with your kid during the summer.
So for clarity, though, that that, eliminating the elementary, this is any school that gives us more flexibility?
Well, it's, it's any school that serves any combination of grades K through 5, which I believe is coming out of the-
Statute.
Verbiage is coming out of the statute.
Yes.
Okay.
So that would include, obviously, a K-8 school, which is not necessarily an elementary school.
Okay. Any comments? Okay.
8.45, School Breakfast Program. No changes suggested there. All right. Now we're moving, we're moving away from the Gerards to Construction. And these, again, Scott and I looked at, but these also went to a combination of folks like Mark Smith and Carol LaShawn and Mitzi, I think, also had review for some of, for some of these. So 8.50 is School Construction Bid Procedures. And the only real substantive change there was just putting in that the board reserves the right to reject all bids, which you clearly have the right to do, but we're just saying it specifically.
I think that's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
It is.
8.502 is entitled Construction Change Directives.
Did we, used to have an Executive Director of Construction?
We did, indeed.
Okay.
During Gary Norris's watch for a time.
Okay.
8.51 is entitled Renovation Remodeling or Addition of Facilities by, basically, school-affiliated 8.52, Construction Change Orders. 8.53, Improvements to School Plants and Grounds. No changes suggested there. 8.54, School Facility Usage for Child Care. 8.55, Designation of School Facilities, Naming. No changes being suggested there. 8.60, Telecommunication Plan and Electronic Communications Use. So we're again, kind of shifting gears. And this refers back to a lot of the guidelines and procedures that are, that are found elsewhere. 8.80, Records Retention. And I know this was one that Mitzi and Sally Frank were both reviewed. And I think, although there looks like there's a lot of red here, I think a lot of it is just nomenclature.
Right.
Title changes, right.
8.81, Reports and Forms Management Committee. And this was a change that I think Sally Frank basically initiated as the, I don't know what her exact title is, Boss Lady of the Forms Committee.
Boss Lady.
So this is the, her suggestion, I think, of how the system is actually working as we, as we speak. So that may be the, kind of the, the biggest, the biggest, the biggest change in Chapter 8.
Right.
Although I don't think it's anything earth-shattering. So that gets us to the end, except as we said, we'll, we'll incorporate the typo and syntax type changes that, this is-
Do we know when the Forms Committee meets, so that I won't be, be there?
I don't.
I don't want to accidentally walk into it.
You'd never be the same. That may be a good thing.
All right. So then, like we did with Chapter 9, we seem to be doing better, starting at the, at the back end here.
Right.
We can, we can put these together with the additional changes, which will also be shown in red, and we'll get those on a soon board workshop, or I'm sorry, board meeting to advertise.
Advertise.
Right.
And I know we've already advertised Chapter 9, so that, I don't know if it's at the end of this month or in July. Those will be coming back for-
Final.
Final approval.
Yep.
And then I know we have, Ms. Tompkins has scheduled us for time in Ju, in July, before the July Board Meeting, to do another policy workshop. Honestly, I'm not sure which ones are going to be.
Chapter 4 and 5.
Chapter 4 and 5.
And it's interesting, and this one's-
We're delaying, really.
Well-
Well, we still have two to go back to. We have plenty.
Well, that's-
I've done seven, so.
So seven's available.
And I've yet to finalize, we haven't done four yet, so that's mine.
Four, six is yours.
Six, sorry. So, go ahead, Eric.
I just want to tell, thank you, Ms. Zucker, for, you did a wonderful job on both the ones you did. We haven't made any changes. We pretty much agreed to everything that she did, so.
No, I was, I was going to say.
You don't have any changes I've made.
No, I think you, no, I think this is a good-
No, so I'm giving you a compliment. I'm saying good-
This is an important one, but I think that you guys did a really good job making it where it's effective, high level, but, high level, but yet effective, because they're-
I'm glad you dove into the details of this instead of me.
And, and from a scheduling standpoint, because I think some of the chapters are longer, and it appears that we need more time, but this one, we did in 25 minutes.
Did pretty well.
I will be cognizant when scheduling them, if, I'll work with Kathy and whoever is overseeing the chapter to give a better insight as to, maybe if we need to start at 5:00 instead, just to be more accommodating to people's time.
So we'll-
Is it 9:00 that's next?
No, 9:00, 9:00, 8:00 and 9:00 are done. We need, we need to decide which one's next.
Okay.
Kathy had suggested maybe 4:00 and 5:00, although that may need to get pushed back a little bit. 2:00, 2:00 is available. You know, we started that, and we got about halfway through, and that's frankly, a little more dense.
Sure.
It is.
And then that has to do with board, the board.
Right.
So it's, you know, something you might be more, more wanting to, yeah, talk about. So we could certainly come back with 2:00. The reason we didn't do that here was because that was Mrs. Brown and Dr. Bowden, and neither one of them are here, so.
Okay.
Right.
We could go back to 2:00, or Eric said 7:00 was ready, so that-
I spoke too soon. We struck through the investment policy, and we, we decided to give that to the Financial Advisory Committee-
Okay.
-to get feedback on them. So everything that I was doing in 7:00 is done, but we, we decided to allow the Financial Advisor Committee to weigh in on the investment policy, so I spoke too soon.
Who's doing 6:00?
Me.
6:00 is Personnel, so that-
4:00, 5:00, and we were delayed because of our-
Right.
Right. And 2:00 and 3:00 were Mrs. Brown.
Correct. 6:00 is Personnel, HR.
Right.
And 4:00 and 5:00. So 7:00 may be contingent upon the Advisory Committee, and when they meet next, do-
They just had a meeting last week.
Okay.
Well, we could even, I mean-
Do everything but that.
We could do everything but that, sure.
Okay. And complete 2:00.
And complete 2:00. Maybe that's-
Okay.
And we may, we may or may not concur with both those things, but.
Chapter 6.
I have the script and the changes for 6:00.
Chapter 6 is Staff Review is Complete. We haven't scheduled time with you. Chapter 6 is by far the biggest chapter in terms of the raw number of policies. So that can be ready kind of at your convenience. What we'd want to do is probably you and I, and Roy, sprinkle, spend some time together and go through them. But even for staff review, we might want to do that in pieces, just because the chapter is so big, so.
So 6:00 is completed from a staff review, or, okay.
Ma'am, it's ready, it's ready to sit down with you.
I'm, I'm ready. So then we have 7:00 and 2:00, 4:00 and 5:00. Maybe we'll be, well, maybe they'll be the last ones. Okay.
I'm already going to 4:00.
Okay. Very good.
And then we have 3:00 to come back to as well, and I'm not sure, I don't know if Mrs. Brown and the Superintendent have met on that or not.
Okay.
But we're, we are making progress.
Sure.
Very, very pleased. Well, good. Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Yeah. Can I ask a question? And this is on 6:00, but 6:00 refers to 2, Procedure 2. If, last time, I believe, we talked about optional use- optional use of school board electronic communications. If that is the word that we use, then the Personnel, this, the policy has to be changed.
Can you, do you have the chapter for 6.1? Thank you.
I think that, I know that we talked about this policy separately. That's when Joe was here. And I don't know if that one, I'm looking at Kathy, maybe she knows, was that put on a board agenda separately? Has that been advertised?
We had voted on, yes, 6.323, which is what I'm looking at. That is-
Okay, so we may-
It's been adopted.
We may need to look at that, then, if there's a change to be made. I'm not sure.
What board agenda was that? We looked at it at the workshop when you were not here. It's when we looked at it.
No, no.
I know we discussed it at a workshop.
Yeah, so that was voted, it was advertised and voted. It was actually, I think, as you referenced, as a texting, even when we pulled it forward, is the texting, the media texting piece of it was amended. So.
We can talk about phones and stuff.
But that's separate. I think we're getting-
But that's at the procedure.
Yes, that's separate. That is separate.
But if you have something different in the policy than you have in a procedure, you have to check-
Align it. Right.